Okay, Director Ooten will be joining us shortly, I think, but I'm gonna go ahead and call the Sep- September, the whatever date it is today. I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 11th study session meeting to order and ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten, Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
And President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Public comments, this is a time set aside for persons in the audience to address the Board of Directors on items not on the agenda. And do we have anybody wishing to speak under public comments?
May I speak?
Sorry, I didn't see the Zoom indicator. Yeah, go ahead, please state your name and city.
Hi, Bob Osgood, Costa Mesa, Mesa del Mar Track. This pertained, my question. We came to your facility and there was a lunch truck and you folks were showing the different size trash receptacles. And I think we had a bite to eat without charge anyway. An email was released and it was the wrong address. My wife's getting this, I'd like to know who I need to contact to provide that updated email. We get information about this meeting that you're about to take place right now. Who'd you suggest I speak with?
Mr. Osgood, I'll have you speak to the clerk of the of the district.
Hi, Mr. Osgood, I can email you our contact information or you're welcome to contact the district main line and have that call transferred to me and we'll all take your information and get that updated.
Okay, may I get your name, please?
Yes, it's Noe Lani, N-O-E-L-A-N-I. Last name is Midway, M-I-D-D-E-N-W-A-Y.
Got it, thank you very much, I'll reach out later this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to our items and study and David, do the code enforcement report for us. Before you start, Madam Clerk, let the record show that Director Vice Secretary Robert Newton is in the house. All yours, David.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, President, Schaefer, members of the board, staff and guests as always. My report for the month of May, this report summarizes three major points for enforcement regarding scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. In the month of May, the district saw a number of complaints filed with CMSD code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. With most scavenging replays, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address this, I'm out on the streets by 6:30 a.m. In the month of May, I caught three scavengers. This month is mainly the the state streets and then one right down the street on on Fridays and off of Bab area. Any questions on that?
Just one, it was only the west side that had that?
Just the west side this month.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Looked like they were all new and pretty obedient.
Actually, the the very first one on the corner of Giesler and Iowa is the same gentleman from last month with the trailers. I finally had an opportunity to to cite him, so he was cited and released, haven't seen him since.
I saw him probably a week ago near where the, you know, in California Street where the flood control channel is. He was just sort of hanging out there, but I forgot to mention that too and I apologize.
No, no worries, I've been hitting those areas that, you know, that I have, you know, contacted him, so. I'm assuming he's, you know, doing late night stuff or something, but I will still keep my eye on that area.
Based on the Alabama, Alabama Street posse, the ladies who congregate, there's been a lot of activity with scavenging, but it seems to be like a they're not people who are scavenging for the recyclables, they're like kids looking for something. I mean, their Ring cameras have been seeing things.
Really, because I've been seeing an increase and we've had a couple calling complaints about the large item pickup stuff being scavenging before CRNR is able to grab it.
Oh, yeah.
And unfortunately, this one address was more concerned about liability on their property if this individual was to fall and get hurt and so. And we talked about it, Julie has, you know, mentioned it, it's an industry-wide thing and anyways. Yes, sir.
If I set something out at the curb anticipating that a neighbor or passerby might pick it up, are they scavenging if they voluntarily put property at the curb?
In that instance, I would say no, because you left it there for them. The scavengers that I'm encountering are more into the trash carts, looking for recyclables. We're trying to deter that activity.
Trash carts and?
Correct.
Turbine?
Correct. Not a problem, sir, thank you. Trash container enforcement for the month of May. As you see, I writ or I wrote 183 violation notices at different locations listed by streets in the amount of carts on that street. Any questions on that?
Any questions for David on that? I guess not.
That'll conclude my month or my report for the month of May, thank you very much.
Thank you, David, very much. Okay. Item two, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President, Marissa Paredes will be giving this report.
Hi, good morning, President and members of the board. This morning, staff is recommending a revised lower solid waste rate for fiscal year 2425 for the board's consideration. This new rate recommendation is based on two factors. One, the previous recommended rate was based on an assumed 5% CPI adjustment to CRNR's rates, since 5% is the maximum adjustment per year. However, on May 28, the board did approve a 3.1% CPI adjustment to CRNR's rates. The second factor is that for the first three months of fiscal year 2425, before the three cart system starts, CRNR will build a district at the current two-rate structure, which is a lower rate. So both of these factors combined do lower the district's net revenue requirement for fiscal year 2425, allowing us to consider a lower rate. Staff worked with NBS to develop a new rate model given these two factors. With the adjustments, the new recommended fiscal year 2425 rate is a 13.7% increase compared to the 16.8% increase that was previously recommended. This puts the new recommended annual rate at $328.92 instead of $337.68. Because the Prop 218 notice that was sent to customers sets the maximum annual rates, no additional noticing would be required to consider this new rate recommendation. This concludes my report and staff is available if you have any questions.
But I was a little confused on that requirement. When, so when we did the Prop 218, we said we are increasing your rates no more than 5%, right?
So it sets the maximum rate overall. We indicated that that adjustment would be the 16.8% for the first fiscal year, but as long as the rate that you actually select is lower than what's on the notice, then, right? So we've let them know this is the most it could potentially be, but if we elect to to charge a lower rate, then there's no additional noticing.
Had we gone the other way from a three to a five, we would have to redo and have a whole new 218 filing, right?
Correct.
Go through the process that we've already gone through.
Correct.
It said in the, in the, in the report, and I agree with the report, that this is an administrative adjustment available to the agency. I think in the future, we ought to put in the 218 report or the 218 notice to the customers that this is the word maximum in in that, in that report. I found it interesting that, you know, staff has the ability and potentially the board has the ability to use that as a maximum. That word is important and I think it should be in the 218, in the future, 218 notices to the customers. I've sat in Mesa's board and several of the board members made them put that word in that, in that 218 notice.
Brett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I guess I'm confused on chicken and egg, I guess. So we sent out a Prop 218, is that correct? And we sent it out, and I agree with Director Ooten's language, so we said, here it is, we're increasing blah blah blah, but now we're gonna come back and say, we're gonna potentially give you a lower rate. Why didn't we decide on the rate before sending out the 218?
We didn't have the approved CPI adjustment at the time that the study was done and then the notice was sent out, since we did need that 45-day noticing period, this information wasn't available at that time.
So how do we, so 45, I mean, why didn't we just wait to do this until after or what, wait for the CPI? I'm sorry, wait for the 218 until after we did the CPI?
Just based on the timeline of when we received CRNR's request, when it's approved, when the notice needs to go out in order to meet the July 1 deadline, the timeline just didn't match up to wait for the approved CPI adjustment.
So my same issue, when we looked at this last time, we have incomplete information, we're guessing. And I just have a real problem with, we're just gonna pass a rate increase, but we don't exactly know, we're gonna do it for five years, maybe less. Now we've got a rate that, I don't know, we sent out to people and are, you're gonna maximum them or whatever, and we don't even have the information.
So the rate was based on the estimated 5% since that is the max, unfortunately. Until that year rolls around and it's approved, we don't know if it's going to be less than that 5%.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I incur with with Director Echols a little bit. I, I mean, if we have to adjust timelines, are we allowed to adjust timelines? Can't we, can't we do that 218 whenever we're ready to do it?
We try, we try to get the the Prop 218, the 45-day notice to comply with fiscal year. We want the the new rate to be approved for July 1, and if we post back the 45 days, if you're done later then, then you're looking at adopting it in July and the new fiscal year already started in July. So we always try to get the rates approved by the end of June.
Then maybe in our partnership with CRNR, we need to get things, we need to get them on the dime a little quicker. And as I say that, CRNR would like to speak, so Julie, go ahead.
I would, excuse me. I think that, so we use a December index, which is the, the, the period for our annual CPI. That information does become available the last week of January and so I would propose, completely understand the comments made today. I would propose, the language in our current agreement says that we submit our CPI requests to the district by April 1st, but I would propose we could amend that or maybe even something by a MOU or a letter from the district that I'm okay to change that to submit by March 1st. So if we move that up, that gives them more time to back into that 45-day notification. And I'm, and I'm good with doing that to help prevent something like this in the future, to have the actual real cost.
That still works with our, that still gets you within the fiscal year.
Yes, because, because we go from February to February and so we we ask CRNR to coincide with our CPA. So if we get it, that the new, the February CPA comes out in March, so that that'll be fine.
Thank you, appreciate that, yes, sir.
I just had a follow-up question. And thank you for that, that, hopefully, I guess that's what I was getting at, a little bit sooner if possible, so that's good. But now I go back, but if I understand the staff report correctly, we now have the approved CPI increase and then also the billing is changed a little bit for a period of time. Can you just, can you explain that one to me?
Sure, so for the first three months of the coming fiscal year, the three cart system won't be implemented. And so we'll be paying the current two-cart rate with that 3.1% adjustment. And then starting in October, when the three-cart system starts, then the rate will adjust to that three-cart rate that's got the higher occupancy cost and the recycling fee included.
Right, so then, with that said, why was July 1 so critical that we get a rate increase when the increase isn't exactly hitting us for another few months thereafter?
Well, the rate, we, we understand, we have, okay, so there's, there's two, there's, there's two things you have to look. One, we have the bills we have to pay to CRNR and that goes into effect in July 1. So you approve those rates, they rate adjustments, so those, we start those in July 1. The carts won't be delivered until October, originally we wanted to deliver sooner, but we're gonna move in October. So if we start charging residents that new rate in July, well, their, their, their paying for service is not received.
Oh, I, I agree, that, that's what I'm, I guess my point. So why didn't we, we could have not had this all done by July 1 because the rates aren't happening until October.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we could have not sent out the Prop 218 because what did it matter?
We still needed some Prop 218 because it's, it's, it's a, it's a long-term, so we're projecting after fiscal year 2425, it could go up 5%. And so now that, that is already approved by the board or would be approved by the board and it would ultimately be by the public if there's not, not a majority protest.
It is still setting that annual rate that needs to go to the county assessor for property tax bills. And so the annual rate just accounts for that three-month period that we're gonna be billed at the two-cart rate, but it's still a new annual rate that will apply for the entire fiscal year.
All right, okay, all right, thank you.
Hope, hopefully, that's, you know, with, with the anomaly here obviously is the rollout of the new carts.
Right.
Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that. Hopefully, the state doesn't say, oh, we need a fourth, fourth cart and that anomaly pop up again in the future.
You're talking about this.
Hopefully, Bob.
Isn't the timeline for submittal of information to the, the county, you know, that has to be done in, in, in August, July or August?
Correct.
So those are the rates that, so we have to establish those rates for, for billing the customers.
Essentially, that's what I think what you just said about making sure that it's on the tax.
Yeah. And
I'm sorry.
And separately, does this mean we could adjust the other four years' rates, you know, with, with, since we appropriately, conservatively estimated five or factually, yes, have a 5% limit for what we pay CRNR. In the future, if the, if the rates come down, which they have historically done, will we go through this same process of adjusting those rates in the future, in the next four years' rate?
We wouldn't need to do another Prop 218 notice, but we can evaluate and the board can approve a rate lower than that advertised in the notice.
Normally, the chart for five years, it's set in stone, but
Just as the maximum rate.
Yeah, but with this, with this process now, it looks like from the study, we used to set them and set those rates in stone. This is a substantial opportunity or change, I guess.
You're not looking, so this is gonna come back at the board meeting for approval.
Right, the public hearing will be at the end of the month.
That's right, we have to do a public hearing, don't we? Okay, any other questions for this item?
Have we had any protests from rate increases? How many do you know?
I don't have the count up on my head, we just got some more this morning, so.
Approximately how many?
I think we had about nine so far.
Good. Okay, let's move to item three, the classification and compensation study.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Dana Wodrowski will be giving this report.
Good morning, Mr. President and board. At the May 14 study session, staff presented the Board of Directors with the results of the classification, the district's classification and compensation study that we completed. At that meeting, the board directed staff to come back with additional information for consideration. The first directive the board gave was to remove cities from the list of comparison agencies to show what the average percentile rank of agencies among only the special districts in Orange County. And if we can scroll down in the staff report, you can see that ranking right there. And as you can see in this graph, compared to other special districts in, in Orange County, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District ranks the lowest in average percentile relationship to other special districts in Orange County. When we take out all of the cities, this is what we get. The special districts that were included as comparison agencies are the district's labor market competitors in the areas of recruitment and retention. And before we move on to the next item, do we have any questions? Is, is Doug Johnson on, our consultant? Okay, I can answer any questions you have at this point.
Good, Brett.
Thank you, just what makes up the, the graph there, average percentile rank of agencies?
That's salary benefits.
And the whole, the, the total package.
Yes.
And then the 29 represents what?
That's where our ranking is within the, the agencies with the, the attachments show, let's see, what attachment is it? It shows all of the rankings like by position where we are.
So, so let's just say there's 100, we ranked 29 out of 100 and then 77s that, or 29, whatever the top is.
The average, yes.
And that's total compensation, a package including Benny's salary, everything, okay, thank you, all right.
Why did we not include Midway City Sanitary?
So Midway City was not included. So out of the 17 classifications that were used in the survey, Midway City had only five positions that were similar to positions here at the district. They have a lot of hybrid jobs. For instance, they have lead maintenance worker slash construction inspector, we don't have anything like that. They have finance manager slash human resources manager, so there wasn't really enough comparison to, to be included, whereas these other agencies do have similar classifications as the district.
And if, if this is in the report, I apologize, I didn't see it. Of these water districts that we, we use, I know that Multonagale has a wastewater component. Do we know which other district, water districts have a wastewater?
Yeah, on this list, all, the only district that's just pure water is Mesa Water in Orange County, our district. All the other districts have sanitation sewers as well.
Okay, I wondered, okay, thanks, that makes sense, Bob.
Well, I think the consultant answered my question last time, but Orange County Sand District pays their employees at the 75%. That, the, the board's goal is to pay staff at the 75% tile rather than, rather than the, you know, so I don't think it's a comparable agency. It may be comparable for classifications, but not for compensation. And I don't know how many of those others have different goals set by their board for their employees. But, you know, I, I, I think it's not appropriate to have Orange County Sand District in the, in the compensation part of the study. I mean.
Well, and these, like I said, these are competitors. When somebody applies for a job at the district, they're also applying at, at Orange County Sanitation District. Or we may have current employees who are looking at OCSD and saying, you know, my job pays this much, but they're paying that, you know, for retention purposes also, we may lose people.
And that's a reason, that's another reason for not putting them in there, because you should put an asterisk beside that saying every employee should consider going to work for Orange County Sand District.
And we, we do not encourage employees to go outside.
So even, even if you
Don't do that.
So even if you take them out, if you take Orange County Sanitation out, we're still far below everyone else.
So it's no problem, we can take them out, but you can still see we're nowhere close to other A D Cs. Yeah.
Well, is our goal to be at the 50% level?
Honestly, the board, the board's never really set a, a certain policy. It's always has been common practice, we wanna, you know, be above average. You know, we don't wanna be the lowest, but we don't, you know, the board has already made, we don't wanna be the highest either. So, but if we're above average, I think the board was comfortable with that.
Sorry, one last follow-up. So this is total package and I apologize, and if it's out there in the last staff report, you know, I'll, I'll find it. Do you have the same comparison for salary and then comparison of Benny's, comparison to retirement? Is that in the last staff report? If it is, I'll find it, but
Including the cities, is that what you're?
Uh, without the cities.
And we have, no, I don't, we, we don't.
But we do with the cities then?
With the cities, we do. We just didn't wanna go back to the consultant and have to pay more money for them to, to
Smart move.
We can do that, but
Nope, I will find it myself, I just wanted that verified, thank you.
Okay.
You're good for asking for questions.
Okay, so moving on to the, the second item that staff was directed to come back with more information. It was the five-year cost analysis of the study's recommendations. So the first table in the report, if we could scroll down. The first table is the five-year comparison of the current status of salaries and benefits versus the classification and compensation study proposals. Keep going, yes, keep going to the financial section, there we go, there we go. Okay, the fiscal year 202425 COLA in column D, if you can see that, and J, shown are, are adjusted to 3.4%. The future fiscal years are assumed a 5% COLA for each year.
Why do you have it at 5% COLA?
The, the, the year 2425, we adjust it from 5% to 3.4%. And the future fiscal years, we assume a 5% because that normally we've been assuming when budget time, we always put in a 5%, just like CRNR, 5%. And then when it's time, we adjust to the actual number.
That every year?
Yes. Correct.
Well, not, not really.
No.
I mean, if, if we had COLA that was 9%, we, we would adjust 9. I mean, we, we go by whatever, I hope we never have a 9%, but who knows?
We, we have had a fiscal year or two that were higher than 5, but the board didn't approve the actual highest.
Yeah, we've had during, after COVID, inflation was like 8%. I think at that point, it was like 8% and the board approved 6.0, I think 6%. So yes, you have approved 5, but I think it was like 6%, it was never 8 or 9%. So again, inflation has, since I've been here, has never been that high before and so that was a nominee.
I think if we averaged out the last 10 or 15 years, we're gonna be below 5% anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
So, so you guys are assuming a max of 5%.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, and then
You have Bob, something else?
Well, in, in, in the longevity page, how common is this in agencies?
I don't think she's to that point in the report yet. Can you scroll down? Okay, sorry, Bob.
Okay, and then if, if we're ready, we can move down to the next table.
To the end result. To the end result.
Yeah, the last column is twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Pull down. Looking at twenty, twenty-four, on the bottom is three, but three, two, nine, two? That's, that's twenty-four, twenty-five. And you go over to twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it jumps over a million dollars, one point three million dollars.
Right, so if you go down to the next table, that's, I did the variance, the difference between the actual status, the current status versus the class and comp study if the board approved. So these are the, if you zoom out a little bit, you can see the total, the different years go down a little bit. There you go. So for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, it will be a hundred and eight thousand dollars addition. And by the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it is four hundred and forty-three thousand more in salaries and benefits. Yeah, and so that table there, I add every, all the changes. And we'll, we'll get to that at the end. We can summarize all of that.
Also includes the, the fiscally conservative number five percent.
Correct.
Lower than that. If, if the, if the CIP is lower than that, I think it's appropriately conservative, but I think it, you know, this year it was conservative.
So you're going to put to this one in a few minutes?
Yes. Okay, so moving on to the next table. So on this table here, we're looking at just one year, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. I just want to show the, what's the adopted budget versus the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five adjusted three point four percent cola and the class and comp changes. So if you recall at the May study session, in the staff report, it said that if the board approved the relocation of positions, the board will need to appropriate twenty-nine thousand to the regular salaries and benefits account in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So this table just shows, just confirmed that you want to go down, it will show the total cost there. The difference between the adopted budget and, and the class and comp study. Yes.
Yeah, just so the table above was a hundred and eight grand difference. Now we're at twenty-nine grand difference. What's the?
Because there are a few things to consider. The adopted budget, we budgeted a five percent cola. And here I'm adjusting it to a three point four percent cola.
How come?
You mean why?
Well, yeah, I'm just, if, if one says five, one's a three point four. I know it's a guess either way, so aren't we going with the assumption of five?
No, because the cola for February to February is actually came in at three point four. So we're adjusting it to a three point.
Three point four.
Right.
So the initial one, the, the five percent that the budget had started out with has been revised to three point four. So three point four is the, is the actual.
Okay, so you're, so you're saying twenty-nine thousand variance versus a hundred and eight? That, that my math isn't that quick, but.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons. It's the cola adjustment from five to a three point four. And then there's also adjustment with the, dur- during the year, there were some vacancy positions and we hire new new staff and at a lower rate. And there's different things that go into it in, at the budget time and the actual right now, where everyone's all right.
So the one oh eight number is meaningless, right?
That's comparing to if the board not the, the board, what, what we are right now. If, if you go back up, no money, if you don't mind. Go up more, please. To the first table. Yeah, you can zoom out so we can see the full. Okay. Go, go up more. Okay, so the, the, in blue, light blue there from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that's the five-year salaries benefit projection. Let's say the board not going to approve the class and comp right now. So the next five years budget, that's probably what's going to look like. And for the light green fiscal years there, if the board approved this class and comp study, those are the numbers that potentially it will look like for salaries and benefits the next five years.
Okay, I'm trying to, all right. Is the twenty-nine thousand the realistic number we're concerned with right now? Because that's real. I know we have the forecast in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I get that, but.
The twenty-nine thousand, I'm comparing what the board already approved budget versus what we need as an addition to if the board approved this class and comp study.
Okay. What, what's the one oh eight?
If if the board.
If we'd approved a five percent cola, it had been at one, plus the other adjustments and things, the vacancies, then it would have been at one oh eight. It, to me, it's thinking, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, but I'm thinking irrespective of those changes, it's internal salary changes and vacancies and things. The, the big factor is that it used a five percent cola increase to, to come to that one oh eight. And we've now gone to actual of three point four, which drops it to twenty-nine. Again, with all those other things that are mixed in there, the again, the vacancies, the salary adjustments and things like that.
Okay, is that?
Yes.
Because it can't just be cola. There's no way that equals eighty grand.
Yeah.
So it's.
We've, we've had a vacant position since September. One of our management positions has been vacant, so there has, has been savings there.
But budget-wise, we went into that being a full, a filled position.
Correct.
Right. Okay, but actual, it's not a filled position, so that salary gets taken out. Smarter than I look.
Wow, leave it to the insurance guy to.
Yeah, really.
All right, thank you.
The actuarial part of it.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that.
Sorry, I'm not trying to usurp what you're doing.
Okay, so moving on, next is, we want to talk about the cafeteria plan. Just, there you go, okay. To increase the cafeteria allowance for the employees plus two tier from one thousand seven hundred per month to one thousand eight seventy-five a month will cost the district an additional eleven thousand each fiscal year, starting fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The projected additional cost for five years will be fifty-five thousand. This cost could increase or decrease if employee changes her insurance coverage plan during the five-year period. There are currently five employees electing the employees plus two plan. Any questions on that section?
Seven thousand, based on twenty-four all the way to twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Yes, if, unless, if, let's say if I'm, I'm single, I'm, I'm at a single plan right now, and if next year I marry with two kids, then I change my insurance plan, then I get the family plus two bucket, then that will change this number here. So the eleven thousand addition per fiscal year, that's just assuming no changes. And for five years, it's going to be fifty-five thousand.
Any changes in the cafeteria plan over the next five years?
I'm pretty sure there will be changes, but for this calculation, I, I don't have a crystal ball to know exactly what year. It's, it's going to be a wild number if I just randomly.
So many factors involved in what, what, what those plans caused. But it stays the same.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I, I want to point out that assuming everything is the same based on what currently we have right now.
You are in California, you know.
Well, the, the premium that, that staff pay will always increase, but the allowance, the bucket that employees receive will stay the same unless if the board approves and increase. Okay.
Do you address the longevity pay?
It's coming up.
Oh.
Okay, longevity pay. If the Board of Directors approves employees' longevity pay, employees who have reached his or her salary range will receive one percent of each goal he or she completed, up to three percent of the current annual salary. Go down on that staff report, please. Okay. This table shows the numbers, the number of employees and the cost for the next five years for longevity pay with the assumption that all staff will be in the same position for the next five years, meaning no new hires, no promotions for five years. All staff will achieve exceptional, exceptional performance goal reviews and receive a maximum merit increase of five percent each fiscal, each year until they have reached their maximum range. And also assuming a five percent cola increase each year. There will be one employee reaching his or her top salary range in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. If the employees exceed all performance expectation and three goals, he or she will receive the three percent of annual salary range, and that would be six thousand eighty-eight dollar, six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I just want to point out that in the written report there, it said six hundred and sixty-six dollars, but that's just a typo. It's, it's a hundred, six thousand one eighty-eight.
That one employee giving the report?
I can't tell you. If the employee achieved.
Not here.
I'm just kidding, because I know the answer.
If the employee achieved only one goal, he or she will receive one percent of the annual salary of two thousand and sixty-three dollars. By fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine, there will be thirteen employees that could reach the maximum range of their salaries and costs are shown in the table there. And, okay.
When you, when you propose these and you, you get to the number of employees that are going to max it, there, is that assuming they get a merit increase?
Yeah.
I mean, if they don't get a merit increase, obviously that'll change.
Right, so every year, I'm assuming everyone here get a five percent merit increase, a five percent cola and no promotion. Everyone's still here the next five years, that's what's going to look like. But let's say if, if next year Diana, in this calculation, I'm assuming a five percent, but Diana receive a three percent, then that will change, will be lower. So this is the maximum that I'm assuming.
And that's not assuming retirements or people moving on to other agencies? That's assuming everybody stays.
Stay, yeah. How co- I, I, and maybe I'm tabbing on to what you had alluded to earlier. How common is longevity pay in special districts, do we know? In pri- in private industry, longevity pay is very, very much in play. I mean, a lot of big corporations do longevity pay. I mean, they, they want to reward those people for getting old. Sorry.
And retain the institutional knowledge too.
Institutional knowledge is what you're looking for.
I've lost, I've lost that a long time ago. So do we know how, how it plays in special districts?
It's, it's mixed. Some not a lot do, but then they also offer other benefits to offset that, so it's, it's, it's hard to say.
What, what a lot of, I think, special districts do, just based on what I hear through STRMA, because we do, you know, the compensation stuff, if, if they're maxed out at their, their pay level, they figure out a way to make their job, their job description a little different, right, and give them more responsibilities. So then they're, they buy, and so instead of doing the longevity pay, they just change their title.
Range, yes.
Yeah, and their salary range, which gives them a, an increase. That's a common thing to do.
Yes.
In public agencies.
And I want to add to that, when you increase salaries, it's affect CalPERS, so then you're you're paying out more for benefits. But this way, it's, it's a one-time, I don't want to say bonus, incentive, a year, so then you're not paying for a CalPERS.
So the longevity pay doesn't affect PERS?
No.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that. Go ahead.
So the new Apple AI apparently is working. It just took everything out of my brain and gave it to you two. Those were my questions, but they wanted to follow up.
I, I don't know if you saw, I saw the news this morning, Elon Musk
He's against it.
outlawed Apple iPhones in his facilities. So if you go to buy a Tesla, you have to lock up your iPhone.
There you go.
Anyway.
All right, so, but follow up on that, so I just want to make both points clear that this is for the employee who's been here, you know, X amount of time and based on performance is getting a performance review of whatever that number may be. And we say, okay, well, now you can't increase your salary by five percent because you're capped. We're going to offer you the longevity percentage. That's where we're going with this. So, yeah, so, okay. And then I just want to make sure, because that was my big thing. This is, in my opinion, a better way of doing it because it doesn't affect PERS, and that's correct. That's, that right there is a big, important fact. So, thank you.
Questions? Ladies?
And then next, we'll talk about commercial pay, commercial driver license pay. To increase driver license pay from twenty-one dollars sixty-seven cents a month to forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month will cost an additional one thousand nine hundred a year for seven employees who are currently receiving commercial driver license pay. The projected total cost for five years will be nine thousand five hundred. Again, this, I'm assuming the next five years, seven employees receiving this pay. And then next is standby pay. To increase the daily rate for primarily standby persons from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollar will cost an additional nine thousand a year. The projected additional total cost for five years will be forty-five thousand. Okay, and then the table that, the printout that you were providing in front of you, this table shows the maximum total projected cost of the proposed class and comp study that includes all the proposed changes. That's salaries, benefits, longevity, cafeteria plan, commercial, driver license pay, standby pay. And I want to make a note that the longevity calculation on here, I'm picking up the maximum three percent. So this is assuming no position, no changes. So this so this, the longevity numbers here, I'm picking up the three percent because employees could get one percent of their, if, if they meet one goal, then they get one percent. Two, two goals, then they get two percent of the salary range. And if the max is three percent. So here, the number I'm picking up is the maximum three percent, just to show you. So here, the number I'm picking up is the maximum three percent, just to show you the, the, the maximum cost.
Could that go up to five percent?
No, because in this proposal, we're proposing a three percent max for, for longevity.
So employees typically have three goals they have to meet each year. And so this is based upon if the employee meets one of those goals, achieves that goal, they get one percent. Two goals, two percent. Three goals, three percent. So that, there, there would only be three goals, so three percent would be the max.
I'm sorry, three percent on.
Longevity.
Longevity pay.
Longevity, okay. Uh, looking at the total salaries and benefits, are you assuming when you do those calculations that every single employee gets the maximum that they're gonna be allowed on, on their salary increase? Is that how you get those numbers?
Yes, yes.
Take the me- I mean, so th- those numbers are kinda floating a little bit because not everybody's gonna get the max, right?
Correct.
So those numbers conceivably could be incrementally lower based on that.
Correct. Or let's say if, if, um, a staff member move on to a next agency and we hire on someone at a lower salary range, things could change.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Based on the total salaries and benefits, those are based on five percent right now?
Yes, except for twenty-four, twenty-five, which is, uh, COLA three point four percent.
If COLA changes, these numbers changes. I mean, there's, there's, those two factors are involved in the total number. You know, a lower merit increase and a lower COLA are gonna, again, drop those numbers.
But for calculation purposes, it's hard for me to determine or predict in advance for five years. So I have to set it, uh, a five percent, the max.
If you can guess those number, if you can narrow those and make them concrete numbers, we're gonna send you to Washington DC.
Okay, looking at the total additional cost for Sacramento, twenty-four, twenty-five, is that just for one person? The total one twenty-nine, nine hundred?
No, that's, that's for the whole district.
All staff. It's all staff.
That's the increase.
That's just one person.
Uh, who, well, can I ask, who, yeah, yeah, I think, I think having set goals for individuals i- is a good thing. Is it the supervisor's responsibility to set those goals? Uh, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see what one, 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 what, what, what kind of goals are set. Art, do you review each one for how important or difficult it and the criteria that the supervisor use?
Yes, yes. And all, on all the goal, we, we try to, when we, we're double goals, we, we wanna make sure the, the employee can achieve the goals. None of the goals that we, uh, set for the employees cannot be achieved. If they're not achieved, it's most likely they forgot about their goals or they had other maybe pressing issues they thought were more important, but we always stress to our employees, don't forget to focus on your goals. Um, all the goals are achievable. If they put their, their mind to it, they can achieve it.
Thing, you use the word, we, you, we use goals that, that they that we think the employee can achieve. In, in my mind, goals are some, you know, something to stretch.
Sure, stretch, absolutely stretching, but they, they're still achievable, right?
Specific, measurable, attainable.
Well, and for example, one of my goals this year is to, uh, complete the classification and compensation study. So that, and, you know, started from the RFP to the point of hopefully having it approved by the board.
You're getting, you're getting closer to reaching your goal.
It's due by July first.
Um, I'm gonna throw a curve ball at you, I think, if you don't mind. When we bring this back for, for discussion at the board meeting, can you also get a number on what, on how it affects our workers' comp premium? Now, we're, are we at zero yet for the mod?
You're at the mod?
Below the E-mod, right?
Below, we're below a hundred.
Are we at eighty-five?
Not yet, no.
We're doing well. We're getting there.
I, I, that's what I understand, but I'm just, I wanna see what effect, and use the current, whatever the E-mod is currently, obviously.
So we just wanna know that for twenty-four, twenty-five, or are you wanting projection for, would they be able to give us for five years?
You know, the rate changes, I, I'm just curious for the next two years.
Okay.
Don't mind doing that for me.
I will get that question.
If, but if we're, if we're at a, at, at a negative E-mod, obviously the effect, and, and that, if, that E-mod could change, we could go even lower. So it's just a curiosity.
Could go higher, could go lower.
Don't, don't.
It's not going to go higher, but.
You wanna reach your goal.
There's a goal.
We are doing everything that we can. In fact, today we have a follow-up safety inspection at the yard. I mean, we are doing everything we can.
You know, you guys have gone from, it was, what is it? It was at one forty-five, I think?
One fifty-six, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It was pretty high.
So you've done a, you guys have done a wonderful job, the whole staff, getting it back down.
Well, and, and with workers' comp, it is really the staff. They are working safer. They are, you know, we're, we, we do training, we do everything we can, and they're just, their awareness.
The only, the only time it's not the staff is if you don't disclose that they went to the doctor. And some agencies do that, believe it or not. So. Who's next? Go ahead.
Just, uh, in the, since we're adding a couple of things, I agree with President Schaefer with that. That's a good, uh, thing. I'm, can you bring back also, I see how we're at the bottom of the barrel in terms of current with the just special districts. Can we get, if all this is implemented, where that lands us with just special districts? Um, and then with that, sorry Caitlin, but, um, I know you've broken everything out, but we're in the middle of our, you know, budget cycle. Can we show this if approved, what the total budget does? Um, I just, I'm a big picture. I just look at the whole thing. What's it really mean? And I wanna clarify. I know, twenty-nine, one oh eight, I just wanna see the total budget. If all this is approved, is that hopefully not too hard?
It's possible. I can do that for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's, that's perfect. Alright, um, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, does our rate increases for the next five years cover the twenty-twenty-eight amount that we're gonna be paying?
For, uh, I'm trying to think for. No, I don't, I don't believe it does. I don't, cause it goes out five years, right? And, and in fact, uh, you remember call the, the last, um, wastewater rate was only for two years, right? And then, and then the next three is gonna be, is gonna be, um, um, stable. Uh, so.
So after five years, our rate increases aren't gonna be enough to cover this?
We have to come back to the board with a rate adjustment, um, to, to cover that cost. If, 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 if there was, if if the revenues aren't covering our costs, right, if the expenses are exceeding our revenues, then we have to come back and do a rate adjustment or propose a rate adjustment.
Set for five years already, isn't it?
Yes, yes. So I'm trying to, um, let me, um, give you one second here.
I'm not sure if this addresses the question, but the solid waste rate study included a assumed five percent COLA and an assumed five percent merit increase. So that would be accounted for, but the adjustments that you're looking at, um, like adjusting positions, that wouldn't have been accounted for in the rate study.
So the sewer rate study, what goes, when the, the rate, the five-year rate that the approved, that the board approved, if it goes through this year, twenty, twenty-six, twenty, twenty-seven. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-nine, we'd have to come back and do a, a recommended rate adjustment. Not, not for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-nine, not on the sewer side, we didn't.
That's assuming we have no other increase in efficiency or, I, I, I mean, we're assuming a rate.
Right, and I have no idea what, what that is, or, you know, we'd have to come back in a few years.
That's, I wanna follow up, it's a good question. So we reviewed earlier day a five, uh, five-year rate adjustment proposed, you know, rate that we'll look at. So you're saying within that five years, let's say year four, we may have to have another one? Did I hear that correct?
Are you talking about wait, we, are you talking about solid waste or wastewater? Because remember the solid waste, wastewater, they're not coinciding with each other, you know, can you understand? So, so yes, one, one or the other, we're gonna have to do a rate adjustment eventually.
Within, so no matter what we do with that previous agenda item on the five-year solid waste rate.
Solid waste, where's that, where does the solid waste go to?
I think we're referring to wastewater as separately because I believe the rate was just set for the first two years and then there was a zero dollar adjustment for three through five. I think that's where the distinction is. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the solid waste rate study includes what we could assume at five percent. Um, it's not guaranteed that this adjustment will affect that. There's a lot of other variables, um, that would come into play.
Right, so I'm looking at the solid waste, so we're looking at the solid waste goes through twenty, twenty-nine. So it does comply with it, with this table. But on the wastewater side, it does not, cause remember the wastewater is two years behind the solid waste. So, on, on, on solid waste side, yes, but most of our revenues is coming from, um, as far as the staffing goes, comes from the wastewater budget.
So, if, when we talk about this at the board meeting, we're basing everything on the five percent increase, right? Possibly, possibly, but it probably won't be that high.
For, for the solid waste, yes.
Talking about this, the survey right here. This is based on five percent each year.
Yes, correct.
And could you, Caitlin, do a, a same study based on three percent, just for us to look at with the figures less?
When you say three percent, would that be merit, um, or COLA?
Just COLA, oh, three point four.
COLA.
Three point four, can you show us what that would be and see if we get closer to the totals that we're gonna need? Is that possible? The same thing like this, but based on three point four.
Okay, got it.
But that's more or less in line with it's historically been.
Yeah.
Well, again, I, th- this table here, I'm calculating to show you the max, like the, the bigger number, so, okay.
Hey, what else?
That, that concludes our report.
So with all the, with all the nonsense we've thrown at you and all the stuff, we'll bring this back to the board meeting for action. We're not doing anything today. Thank you for your patience, all of you. Thank, I.
Thank you.
Speaking for me and not the rest of them, you guys tend to make this very, uh, easy to understand. And we appreciate that, all of you.
Hope so, thank you.
Bob may have some difficulty.
A compliment for them, not us. We're the dumb ones up here. We need a lot of explanation.
I'm not, I'm not going there.
Well, it's, it's a lot of information.
Lot of stuff there.
You should see all the spreadsheet that we have to come to this, to these numbers.
The other districts, I mean, you guys get the information from the other districts. You don't go to the, do you go to their website to pull it off, or, or do you talk to people there?
No, the consultant actually talks to people. They don't just, they don't base it upon the website information, salary schedules. They, they actually go to the agent.
I guess my devious brain is thinking, are they really giving you the, are they really giving you legit, or giving the consultant legitimate numbers, or are they projecting things that we don't know about?
Well, well, you do have to remember too, all of our salaries are online. It's public, so.
That, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, yes. So, I mean, they, they could fudge with it, but then it's going to be, you know, the, if you look at the salary history, it.
You're saying they will get caught if they.
Exactly. Transparency, right?
That's right. Alright, thank you. Um, I think we're ready to move on to item four, Gina, if, if that's Gina's.
Yes. That's me. Good morning, members of the board. Uh, so before you is our congressional and state legislative reports. On the congressional side, um, you'll find that various, various bills that mainly address, um, things like funding of wastewater and solid waste facilities, proper labeling of wipes products, recycling data collection, reduction of plastic waste and liability regarding PFOS impacting the environment. These are all topics that we've seen discussed by Congress every year, and like most years, many of these bills remain stagnant. There hasn't been much movement. There's only two bills that we've seen some significant movement on this year. And those are Senate Bill eleven eighty-nine. That's the Recycling Infrastructure and Accessibility Act of twenty twenty-three. And it would require the EPA to establish a pilot grant program for jurisdictions of all levels to improve recycling accessibility. And then the other bill is also a recycling bill. It's Senate Bill eleven ninety-four. This is the Recycling and Composting Accountability Act, which would task the EPA with establishing reporting requirements and standardized data collection for federal agencies, recycling practices, and composting infrastructure capabilities. So both of these bills were passed by the Senate and they are awaiting action in the House. Um, so that concludes the congressional report. Any questions on that side? If not, I'll move on to, um, the state legislature. So, um, in that report, you'll see all of the active bills that we're currently following in the second year of this two-year legislative session. Um, some of the notable bills on the list include AB eight seventeen. Um, this bill would allow subsidiary bodies, um, such as the Citizens Advisory Committee to have members teleconference into meetings without following specified Brown Act requirements, uh, similar to the board. Next is AB eighteen twenty. This would allow project applicants to require preliminary project fee estimates when submitting their permit applications to us. And it would also allow them to request a final fee list after permit approval. Um, AB twenty ninety-five, this bill expands the current requirement to post public notices in the newspaper. Um, they say a newspaper of general circulation. And this bill would further require the newspaper to then publish, publish that notice on its website if it has one, and also to post it on a statewide repository. Um.
Newspapers, when, how, how many people in this room get a newspaper? Well, I, I should have. I guess I should have already assumed that, but, you know, that's just an exercise of futility that, anyway, sorry.
It sounds like they're trying to bring it online as opposed to the paper.
But what online?
No.
Everything. So, uh, the next bill is AB twenty-two thirty-six, which is actually the same as Senate Bill ten fifty-three. Um, this would expand the state's plastic bag ban to include those thicker plastic, um, reusable bags that are provided at grocery stores, um, usually for a fee. They're saying that those pretty much end up in the landfill as well. People typically are not reusing them. Um, so that's the purpose of that bill. AB twenty-two fifty-seven, um, with regard to water and wastewater fees, this bill would require a rate payer to exhaust all administrative options, including submitting a Prop two eighteen public protest before they can bring a lawsuit to contest a fee or assessment. Um, AB twenty-three oh two, this bill would limit the number of meetings that a board member can attend remotely under the rules set by AB two four four nine. So for CMSD, um, this would be five times per year for each board member. AB twenty-five thirty-three, this bill would establish a process for those with unpermitted, uh, accessory dwelling units, ADUs to get them permitted, and also seeks to offer financial assistance to lower to low to moderate income households that are seeking to get their ADUs permitted. And then, in the Senate, we have Senate Bill nine thirty-seven. This would prohibit a local agency from collecting development and impact fees until a certificate of occupancy is issued for a residential development project. SB eleven sixty-four would prohibit charging property tax assessments on an ADU that's constructed between January one, twenty twenty-five through January one, twenty thirty, for a period of either ten years from completion or until the ADU changes ownership, whichever happens first. And then lastly, we have SB twelve ten. This would require local agencies to post electrical, gas, water, and sewer fee schedules. gas, water and sewer fee schedules, as well as estimated timeframes for new service connections and capacity upgraded, upgrades needed to connect new housing construction projects. Um, so you'll see there's a lot in there that, um, pertains to ADUs and permitting. Um, so those are all things that would impact us. So we're following those bills closely. Um, as always, the bills, uh, in the reports are all linked to the appropriate congressional or legislature websites for more information, um, including the official bill language analysis and up-to-date voting records if you're interested. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Um, you, you probably gave it ten out of thirty.
Yes.
For my, you know, I guess I fall asleep reading all of these. Two thirds of them are more, you know, don't much affect the agency. So if you could highlight the ones in red, you know, that are the most important to us or some, some way. You know, then I have to pay a lot more attention to those than the other twenty-five.
The twenty-three oh two, about how many meetings we can attend remotely. I was reading that formula because we meet once a month, we get five times.
I think it runs.
So the only meeting that counts as a meeting for these guys, I think.
I think the language they use is regular meetings. So correct me if I'm wrong, but is the study session considered a regular as well?
But we meet two times.
The two times a month, and that's where the five, five per year comes from.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five times a year if regular meetings occurred two times a month. What if you're sick the first five months and then you have an emergency in October, you, you can't, you can't do the meeting, right?
Not with the new, the new rules. There has to be a, a reason and.
Going to be abused and who's going to track it, you know?
Right.
No, no. Um, I'm surprised CSDA is supporting it.
Usually they support if they've had recommended amendments that have been accepted. So they might've negotiated a little bit.
Yeah.
Just, uh, just a request, uh, and, and to Director Uden's point, I mean, complain, I mean, I don't know how these people propose and write fifty thousand laws up in Sacramento. It's, it's ridiculous. So we could complain up there, but for our purposes, uh, the status, the one thing I would ask, I know you have in here on the actual report about it's in committee, blah, blah. Is there a way to, well, to add almost a column of like, okay, started in committee here, went to vote here, but now it's re-referred back to committee here. Like, um, there's a timeline, I think on ledge, report, whatever, that says, hey, it's in the first house, in the original house, now it's in second house, something like that that we could see. Because some of these will never, ever, ever get out of committee.
Mm-hmm.
For a good reason, but, uh, but if they've been re-refered from the second house back to committee, that law is probably going to pass. So I, just some sort of timeline, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking I could screenshot. They have, um, a visual representation of that usually on the state website. I could try to put that in there.
Because some of these, like I said, they're, they're never going to pass out a committee, but other things, we're getting closer.
I just asked you, are you looking for just the ones that affect us?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, don't, don't do this on air. That's all you'll do for a living. So.
Sorry. Thank you for that clear, yeah. No, I, I can, yeah, figure out this stuff that maybe person, that, anything that affects this district, then would be good. Thanks.
For, for my purposes, I, I typically include, um, those related to recycling or sort of the, the broader solid waste sphere. If that's not of interest, I can leave those out. Um, like the plastic bag ban and things like that is, is that the type of thing that you want to see in the report or not really?
Oh, I, I would say leave it out. I mean, or at least you can say the bill number, but don't put a lot of.
Okay.
I thought plastic bags were already banned.
They, it was like the thinner, you know, the old pipe.
I don't go to the store, so I don't know.
It turns out that there's actually a higher percentage of plastic bags in the environment than prior to the bill. So they're probably trying to amend it.
So that, yeah, so you should always shop at Trader Joe's because they give you a paper bag.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else for Gina? Thank you. Appreciate the report. Scott, item five?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So the vast majority of our training, it does occur in, in California. Occasionally we do travel out of state for training, and when that requires out-of-state training, it does require board approval. Most of our out-of-state training is occurring in Nevada or Arizona. And so what staff is proposing that the board consider amending, um, policy that will give the general manager authority approving out-of-state tra- traveling for just, to just Nevada and Arizona. So any other states that staff wants to, to attend for training, like New Orleans or Chicago or, you know, Boston, it would still have to come to the board, uh, for approval. Um, if you're comfortable with that, if you're comfortable looking at revising, um, the policy to give the general authority for out-of-state travel to Nevada and Arizona, that my recommendation is to direct staff to bring a draft policy to the Citizens Advisory Committee, let them review and comment on it, and then we could bring, uh, uh, a final draft policy to the board for your approval consideration.
Thoughts?
So I'm generally okay with the staff. So you're basically saying you don't need to come to us, you as the general manager, for those two states, if there is a training, you could just approve, assuming it's budgeted and paid, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And today you have to come to us for those.
Yes, yes. So I think at the end of this month, I am coming to the board with two out-of-state travel requests.
Okay, but just the, and then the one thing I was confused on was the board section that you were recommending amending two different operations codes and that's what I was confused on.
They're, they're not consistent. So one section in the operation code says the board cannot travel out of state without board approval. Then there's another section that it's okay for the board to travel out of state. So we just want to clean it up.
And which way are you going that?
I, not, not, it's up to you, my recognition, board, you, you set policy. You, you don't want to, uh, uh, approve your colleagues going out of state. That's, that's fine. You know, that's, that's up to you. But if you do, I'll, I'll leave it up to you, how, how you want to do it.
Okay. Yeah. So I agree. That needs to be codified. I mean, I, my own opinion is we'll stick with the one that it requires board approval to travel out of state.
That's, that's, I'll leave it up to you to make that decision.
So, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with transparency.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Better.
Okay. Don't you still have to put, uh, stage the board agenda on your door? If you're out of state, in other words, you're at a hotel or wherever you're at.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, I mean, that's different, different items. If we're going, if we're, i- if we're going to require staff, if, if staff's requesting to travel out of state, um, then it has to come to the board for approval. What I'm saying is that if staff wants to travel to, um, Arizona or Nevada, which is probably the two states where more staff travels the most for out-of-state training, it would be approved by the general manager. So it wouldn't come to you for approval.
Questions?
Yes, I'd go, when I first said, I would, if the board's okay, I would take to the Citizens Advisory Committee, get their comments, suggestions, bring those back to the board for, for approval consideration.
You'll bring the policy changes you recommend back to the board?
Yes.
This, this month?
No, no, it'll probably be, um, July or August. Yeah.
All right. Um, closing items, oral communications and director comments. Any director comments, Bob?
In the future, I'd like an update on, um, Ms. Mallard.
I have no, 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 nothing. I haven't heard a thing.
I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable doing that. If it's a closed session, I, I mean, there is potential litigation with this, so I, I'd prefer not to do updates. It'd have to be in closed session.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I'll do it.
Makes sense, Bob? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Any other oral communication? Go ahead, Brad.
Oh, go ahead.
Alfred Arlene.
Yep.
You're up.
No, I don't have any.
Oh.
The only thing I was saying, uh, was the part about the legislation agenda, you know? Somehow I can get the, um, legislation things to you and then you could just take it from there if you want. Would you, don't you just get it yourself too? Yeah, yeah. Because I used to be on the legislation committee and now I'm not. I've, I've got too many. So, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge the insane amount of work, prep and volunteerism that occurred last weekend at the, uh, district's sh- uh, dock shredding and compost giveaway. What an, I, if I'm mistaken, correct me, I think over eight hundred cars visited us, which last year was six hundred something. So we're, it's, it's incredibly popular and the promotion that you all did, I think made a huge difference. A lot of people were talking about, a lot of people showed, uh, uh, I think it, I think it's well received in the community. I think it offers a great benefit, but most importantly, for all of you and everyone who was there volunteering your time on a Saturday morning where it's everyone's day off, that says a lot about the staff we have here. And, uh, that's incredible that you would all be out there working and the, for those who lifted those compost, compost bags, hopefully your Sunday wasn't totally spent in traction. But, uh, thank you all for doing that. I think it's a great event. I think that was our year two and hopefully continue on. But thank you all for doing that and CRNR for providing all the support in the comp, the compost and the trucks and everything like that. So it's also kind of fun to get to know everyone on a personal level too, outside of this four walls. So thank you all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just echo those comments and, uh, I think the hero of the day, um, was the young lady that CRNR had outlifting the compost bags and sweeping. Uh, after you, you and I had talked, I kind of watched over there. That young lady was like a bee. She was all over the place. So.
Amazing.
She may be eligible for longevity.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Art.
How many are we doing this shredding?
Uh, over eleven thousand pounds of shredding paper. Eleven thousand pounds.
Eleven thousand?
Yes.
I think we ought to do this weekly then.
Whoa, whoa.
Well, I just, I just want to say that the reason I was late was because I was so tired driving to that event. Why?
Would you go at five?
Good morning.
Wow. But most of us are in tune, in tune enough to only go once. I mean, we're, don't penalize us for that. Art, Jason? Okay. Um, I just have a, we need to get the solid waste ad hoc committee. I mean, we've been talking about that. There's a lot of issues, I think, that we're having even with the rollout, fees, liquid data damage, all this stuff. We need to talk about this stuff.
Yes, we're aware of that and it's going, and we're going to be reached out to you real soon and schedule a date. We're, we're aware. Yes.
Okay, I think there's some issues we need to.
When are you leaving the country?
Um, June twenty-fifth. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, let's, I don't, I'm not sure we can get it in before that, but there.
What's, are you meeting with the mics?
I can meet with them, but I don't know if we can get an agenda.
Do the best we can. If we can meet before the twenty-fifth, but there's no guarantee.
I'll be, I'll be going in July, uh, from June twenty-seventh to approximately July twenty-seventh. So. Um, can I tune in to the, um, to this committee and the board committee remotely?
Yeah, you, you, I mean, you want to actually participate, you have to just post the agenda on, on the door and the old fashioned way, you know, how we used to. Yeah, yeah, you definitely, yeah, we can do that. We should have to notice that on the, on the agenda. Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll confer, yeah, we'll confer with, with our district council for, as well.
If, um, I mean, based on when we meet with the solid waste committee, I'm going to ask that, um, Director Perry represent you. If, if we meet while you're gone, are you all right with that?
Yeah.
Art, you okay with that?
I'm, I'm, I'll turn it anyway.
Oh, okay. Then, then let, let's talk about that this week. Get it, get it set up.
Maybe June twenty-seventh and approximately.
Going to Vietnam too?
No, I'm going to a, a very pretty country called Michigan.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? All right. Good meeting. Thank you all very much. Thanks.